All right, it's six o'clock. We'll get started with our regular monthly meeting for December and the last one of the year. And I'm sure Vice Mayor Granby will be here in just a moment.
Mayor, yeah.
So we'll have our pledge and our invocation. Jennifer, would you do our invocation, please? And Mike, would you do it, please?
Yes.
Everybody stand, please.
A pledge and allegiance through the flag of the United States of America, mature republic, which is grand, one nation, united, with liberty and justice.
That's great. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity for these people to lead our community into the future. Our community is blessed, and Lord, we just ask you to continue to bless us and bless all the people that give up themselves to make this community great. Ask you to be with the law enforcement folks as we go through these holidays and everybody in this room, Lord. Thank you again for blessing Mount Pleasant, and we just ask you to continue to pour on us in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, wow. That's a long list. All right, roll call, please, ma'am.
Mike Davis.
Here.
Jacqueline Granby.
Here.
Bill White.
Here.
Willie Alderson.
Here.
Pam Johnson. All present.
All right. Thank you. All right, number four, we've got approval and correction. We've got two sets of minutes, please. Study session and the regular commission meeting from November. And once you've had an opportunity to review or entertain a motion.
Ma'am, are we swearing in? No.
You can vote on it. Ms. Johnson can't vote yet.
Right.
Yeah.
Hey, this agenda's been reworked forty times. We're gonna stick with this.
So you're okay with us moving forward with the minutes and then doing the swearing in later?
Are you doing it before you get to number five?
But Ms. Johnson won't vote. Or you want us to move things around? And we were already gonna suspend the rules and...
Where is the election or where is the swearing in?
Next.
Awards pre- number five?
Oh, all right. Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
Good.
Hey, it's December, everybody. All right, entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
Make a motion that we approve the study section minutes and the last month minutes.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Got a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Awards presentations and appointments, A is oath of office for our new city commissioners. And that would be Mr. Davis and Ms. Johnson?
Have we suspended the rules yet on moving to...
We were doing that after five.
After five, yeah.
Okay, I had it after roll call. Okay, great.
Oh, good.
Your paper says after five.
It's after roll call.
Well, I can do it now.
As long as it gets done.
It'll get done.
It'll get done.
It'll get done.
So if y'all two would like to go forward.
You ready? And...
In time or...
Everyone together.
Do them together? Okay. State your name.
I'm Pamela Johnson.
I'm Mike Davis.
Just solemnly swear.
Just solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That Tennessee.
That Tennessee.
And the laws and ordinances.
The laws and ordinances.
Of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
Of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
And the performance of my duty.
And the performance of my duty.
As Commissioner.
As Commissioner.
For the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
For the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations.
We could do photo ops after the meeting if you want to.
Now, I'll probably need your signatures. Also, Mike, I'll also need your signatures before y'all get going.
Oh, okay.
Congratulations, folks.
Thank you.
It was a... Both did a great job, and it's a pleasure to have you. That's for a second. All right. We've got A out of the way. Our number one is nominate and appoint a new mayor.
Okay, so if we don't swear her in, we can't vote. That's why I wanted that this...
Right.
Okay, so we're good. We're good now?
We're good.
All right, thanks. I'm sure we're on the same page.
Now you can vote.
Now you can vote.
We felt that was important.
Yeah, okay. No, we're good. We're on. It's all good.
We're ready for one.
And you all received the rules for nominations and all that, right?
Yeah, in your packet.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to nominate Bill White as a city mayor.
Got a motion. Do we have any other motions? As we have it now, it does not require a second.
Can have as many nominations as you want.
Not saying that you have done a good job, but let's just put it that way. But I would like to nominate Ms. Jacqueline Granby.
All right, we have two nominations. Did we vote on the first one?
We voted on them in order. In order, yes.
All right. Bill White.
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Jacqueline Granby.
Aye.
Mike Davis.
I can't because I found her.
Bill White.
Yes.
Willie Alderson.
Yes.
And Pam Johnson.
Yes.
That's four to one.
Okay.
All right. Second, we have nominate and appoint a new vice mayor. And with that, I'd like to nominate Ms. Granby, please.
Any other nominations?
Hearing none, roll call, please, ma'am.
Jacqueline Granby.
Aye.
Mike Davis.
Yes.
Bill White.
Yes.
Willie Alderson.
Yes.
Pam Johnson.
Yes.
Aye, zero, motion carries.
All right, mayor's appointment to Mount Pleasant Power System Board. I've had a number of discussions with Al and with Mike Tyler. And even as late as this afternoon. And with that being said, in talking with them, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Alderson to be the representative from the commission on our Mount Pleasant Power Board. Does that require a second? I don't know about that one, Corey.
I would do it the same way we do everything.
And then ratification by our board.
Okay. Roll call.
Jacqueline Granby.
Yes.
Mike Davis.
Yes.
Bill White.
Yes.
Willie Alderson.
Yes.
And Pam Johnson.
Yes.
Aye, say what a motion carries.
Congratulations.
All right.
Okay, now we're gonna suspend the rules. And I'll make a motion. Suspend the rules and move item 11H, which is presentation by the auditor to after 5B on the agenda, which is coming up next.
We need to vote on that.
Got a motion? We have a second. Got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You got the floor.
Thank you. Bob Adams, I'm with Blankenship CPA Group. And we're here to go over the June 30, 2022 financial statement audit. First of all, I just want to thank, number one, the board for entrusting us to be the city's auditors and for management, for all the help that they provided during the audit. Just a few highlights from the audit. It was unqualified clean opinion done under government auditing standards. It was subject, when you have over $750,000 of federal awards, it does require what they call a uniform guidance audit. So this audit also includes that, which basically means in addition to us submitting the report to the state comptroller's office, it will involve us submitting the report to the federal audit clearinghouse. There was, and we did have an exit conference with the mayor and management last week to go over the audit. One thing we did note in our audit, we did have one, what we would call recommendation deficiency. And that's noted in the independent board's report on compliance. And that, we discussed that. There's a corrective action plan within the...
Seventy-six?
It's on pages seventy-six. And then seventy-six is where we write our...
Oh, okay.
Our... Seventy-six is where we write up the findings. Seventy-eight is where management submits their correction plan, which I know they were, even before last week, was already working on a plan to remedy that item. If there's any questions in the report or anything I'm going over, I want to be very brief, but also give you all the information you need. Feel free to ask. A few things we did go over in the meeting, too, which I think is good to know. We did look at some financial metrics. We looked at things such as cash as a percent of expenditures, change in net income versus expenditures, debt as a percent of assessed value. And in the state debt compliance manual, they have benchmarks to hit. And those, you know, the city scored pretty well on those. Also, for the utility divisions, which would be water, gas, and electric departments, there was a positive change, statutory change in net position. So that, basically, that means taking net income, taking out any grants. There was a positive rate of return when you look at revenues versus expenses for the year. I'm proud to report those things. A few other things just in the report. Balance sheet wise, on the government-wide statements, the city has about $5 million in net position and about $4 million of that is unrestricted. There was a positive change in those government-wide statements of about $200,000. In the fund statements, about $4.4 million in fund balance. That's basically taking government-wide statements, pulling out things like capital assets and debt. And then $2 million of that is unrestricted. On the utility funds, about $40 million in ending net position, about $15 million of that is unrestricted. When you take all three utilities and put them together, we had about $1.9 million in net income, even taking out any grants, anything like that. Positive change in statutory net position. Those were the main highlights from the report. But if there's any questions or any other information, feel free to let us know either here or reach out to Kate and Loretta, and they know how to get ahold of me. Is there anything else?
Always good to get a good report. I'll say that.
Bob, thank you. And I was at the closeout. And Kate, I'm gonna go ahead and address the finding right quick. The finding was that back in June of this year, we noticed an issue that the finance department needed an extra employee. And we approved an extra employee for that area. We have just not been able to fill that as yet. And what this gets down to is the fact that, and Bob, tune in anytime, please. It gets down to that with... We got a lot going on in the finance department now. I mean, listen to the net position we're in. That's a great position for a community to be in, where I can remember when we were bouncing against zeros. And so Loretta has done a fantastic job with all that. So what was found was is that the bank statements are getting reconciled in a timely manner. Okay, it's what it got right down to. And that being the checking accounts, basically, where you go back and make sure everything line up and line up. So I appreciate how Kate and Loretta have already addressed this. And we talked about it in that. And Bob is gonna, if you hadn't already, I just had to say it, is gonna get us a quote for Blankenship to come in. Probably do it offsite so you wouldn't have travel, you wouldn't have all that expense, maybe. But them to be able to take those monthly statements, we're in a rear zone, it's about four months, and go in and get those current for us. Then once we're current, Kate has already lined out and talked with Loretta about, this is how we're gonna do this going forward. Kate's gonna get a sign-off sheet on each account monthly. Now, it still doesn't address the employee, and I don't know how we do that any more timely than what we're trying right now.
He'll be coming to you in January on that.
Because it is what it is. Okay? If there wasn't any money missing, let's make that perfectly clear. Nothing.
So when you all passed the new position, we said we wouldn't fill it until we added it to the budget. And we have a budget amendment coming in front of you in January, and that's where we'll discuss that.
So I'll be happy to answer any of the questions that you may have. Bob would be, I know as well, Kate and Loretta would be. But what I'm pleased with is, look, I've been doing this forty years in the banking industry. This is going to happen. It happens. It's reality. The thing that I'm most proud of is the fact that management has already addressed this. This is how we're going to handle it. And in pretty short order, we're gonna be back where we need to be.
And just so you know, as commissioners, all we're doing is accepting what he's presented. That doesn't mean, because you're just seeing this for the first time. So you have every opportunity to look through it and ask questions further. And all you're doing is accepting what he's presenting. So we have every opportunity to, we can have him back here if we need to, or we can email questions. But I know it's hard to have a large document put in front of you. You're accepting the audit is what you're doing.
And I would add to what y'all said. Financial duties are very, you know, there's a lot to them, even more now than ever. You know, grant compliance, loan compliance, there are just a lot more hoops to jump through on those things. And also, we talked about in our meeting, too, about, you know, being on top of cybersecurity threats because they are out there and they're ever-changing. So it's a much more challenging thing now than ever.
And we have to have a policy on that by, is it June 30th? Okay.
Yes.
On cybersecurity.
Yeah.
And we're working on that with MTS and others.
So any questions from any of them? Bob, thank you.
Appreciate it.
It's a pleasure, and I know these ladies have enjoyed working with you as well.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, we need a motion to accept this report, please.
I make a motion that we accept the report as presented. And any findings or complaints we may follow with him later.
Exactly. Got a motion? Do we have a second? Got a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Completion review of unfinished business.
I didn't know, Mr. Mayor.
Neither. Monthly report for mayor, the only thing I've got, or I got a couple of things. Number one is, Howie, do you mind just stating? Howie told me when I came in that there's a group of scouts here this evening. Yeah. And y'all mind just kind of explaining what you're doing?
Yeah, sure, Mr. Mayor. We're the scout troop here in town from 154. And we are working on our citizenship and the community merit badge. And one of the requirements is to attend a public meeting, town meeting, and learn about the issues. And these young men are taking notes back here. And then when we reconvene at our scout meeting, each one is gonna talk about what they learned here. So thanks for having us here.
I thank y'all for being here.
Thank you.
And thank y'all for being involved, young men, very much. And I'll go ahead and say it now. I hope everybody has a great holiday. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We got a lot to be thankful for. And I mean that. So that's all I've got. Monthly financial budget report, please, ma'am.
Make this brief. You all received, of course, your audit report. That is your June 30th report. So tonight, you'll actually have two reports. Your other report was emailed to you earlier this morning. And one thing of note is that our bond issue was completed. We've got the money. It's in our bank account. So that was finished. And again, we did have an increase in our credit rating because of a lot of the policies and procedures that we've put into place. Was able to increase that limit, that credit rating, which gave us a lesser rate. So that was certainly something that's positive. Another positive note is that our, this month, our permit fees were way up. And so that has actually created a revenue in excess of what we had budgeted for for the month. So those are some good things to note. If you got any questions, just let me know. Feel free to let me know, and I'll be glad to go over them with you.
And this is really for all the commissioners, but Ms. Johnson, as being new, there's probably spreadsheets that look different than spreadsheets that you look at. And we're happy to go over with you so you can, you know, every month where you want to look.
Because there's...
A lot of information.
It's a whole lot.
Yeah.
A lot.
Yeah. That was also something that helped us get our credit rating down was because they noted that our commission received more reports than just about any other commission. And we kept you more up to date than most cities actually do.
Yes, they asked how often we let you see it. Well, anytime, but every month you get a report.
Yeah. And they asked for copies of all of that.
Yeah. Hey, anytime you get your bond grading in a better place, you go borrow money at a lesser amount. And that's what's the positive in every bill. So that's a good thing. All right, need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Got a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Monthly report from city manager.
I'm kind of repeating what you've already said, you know, Merry Christmas, safe holidays. But I do want to thank Pam Johnson and Mike Davis for being willing to serve for the next four years. And that's what we need in this community to be able to get where we need to be. So appreciate you stepping out and doing that. And otherwise, you know, I hope everybody has a great holiday season.
All right. Special reports from other departments. Wastewater.
Wastewater, we're making progress. We have a project that's off of our list, which is great. The influence project has been removed because it's complete. So that's good news. When we go to the sewer trunk line project, we hope to close that out in the month of January. And the reason why that's important is that was funded by a city community development block grant fund. And you can't apply for the next one until you close that one out. So we're working to close that one out so we can apply for the 2023 city block grant, which would be about $640,000. And then the Rainy Street Sewer Improvement Project, you're gonna hear later in the meeting that we're gonna ask you to defer. The bid that we opened today was at least twice what we thought it would be. So we want to regroup and talk with the engineers on next steps and have that back on the agenda for January. I guess the good news is that we've gotten this far and we've bid it out. We just didn't like the bid. I think I mentioned to you at the study session that we did not get the CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant that we applied for through the camp, which was for finding additional water resources. That news came back last week, but we'll continue to apply for those grants. Then the final on the wastewater treatment, the green repair project, which is, that also came in at very, very high. And we're gonna recommend that we do that in phases. And that's later on the agenda, that we're gonna ask to defer that to January and come back with a proposed plan for those phases. As far as the wastewater treatment plant improvement, that's improving right along. And a lot of construction, and we have monthly update meetings on how the construction's going. So it's, everything is, everything's a good news, except that every time we bid something out, it's just like everything else. It's way more than we anticipated.
Yeah.
And we'll have to address it.
All right, any questions on wastewater? Gas?
Everything is great in gas right now.
Yeah, I saw our revenues were up. How much in gas?
Like 40%.
20%.
Our gas, our expenses will probably be up, too.
The expenses are up and the revenues up.
Works both sides.
All right. Eleven, new business, resolution 2022-49, a resolution adopting T-DOT consultant selection policy.
And mayor and commissioners, this impacts the downtown revitalization grants, the one that we've already been awarded in 2018 and the one that we just were awarded this year. And we thought we had already passed this, but it's just a process that needs to be in place on how we work with our consultants. And this came straight from T-DOT. And just need to have it in place for the current grant that we have and the grant that we were just awarded.
Any questions about that? You've got a package with it here. It's the number of pages.
Twenty-one pages, yeah.
So entertain a motion that we approve.
I make a motion to approve resolution 2022-49.
A motion? Do we have a second? We've got a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Resolution 2022-50, B and C are really kind of hand in hand, just FYI. Resolution to accept the ownership and maintenance of sewer improvement servicing the Sugar Creek subdivision, section three.
And mayor and commissioners, I'm gonna ask for some guidance here from Corey, but we're gonna ask you to defer these to the January 17 meeting. But I'll let her kind of chime in as to why.
So these are the letters of credit for the public infrastructure in Sugar Creek Phase Three. So there are four different bonds total, or calling them bonds, but they're letters of credit that are dealing with this subdivision. There's one with the top coat for the road, which y'all approved at the last meeting. And then when a subdivision plat comes before the planning commission and they want the planning commission to sign it, they either have to say that the public improvements are done, or if they're not done, they have to put a bond in place for the amount to be completed. So there are two separate issues here. The, everything is complete. All the public infrastructure in Sugar Creek Phase Three is done, except for the stormwater system. So there will be item D here. We'll be asking you to accept the letter of credit in the amount.
It's stormwater, right?
Just for stormwater. And that's because that one's not done yet. And then our subdivision, or our regulations for water and sewer require that even when something's completed, there has to be a maintenance bond in place. And so we have calculated the amount of the maintenance letter of credit. Those amounts are correct. But I didn't like the language in the actual bond itself. So we're gonna ask the bank to send a different one to make it a little more clear. So what y'all had in front of y'all is a resolution that would accept the water and sewer pipe as built. And then it would, you would own them as of passing that resolution. And then you would take over maintenance for them at the expiration of these letters of credit. But because we're not ready to do those at the same time, I would ask that y'all defer those two items until next month so that we can make sure that the letter of credit matches exactly what we're asking them to do.
Let me put this together right, Corey.
Yes.
So this is helpful. You should all have this in front of you. So it's four different bonds.
Is that only B and C or...
Yes, yes, sir. It's... Yes, yes, sir. It's uh, yes, B and C, and then uh, the storm drain um, letter of credit is correct, because that is for completion and not for maintenance.
Okay, okay.
So we're asking you to defer B and C to the January seventeenth meeting.
Is it okay to do them both at the same time?
I think that's fine.
Carl, each
Yes, ma'am.
Each one's on an individual le- letter, right? They're not, okay.
They're separate.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna throw a wrench in this. I think we need new quotes on to get the work done.
For all of them?
All of it. Cause I'm telling you, we just got Rainy Street, it was double. And these were probably done how many months ago?
They were done last month at the planning.
I know they went through the planning commission.
Yeah.
I'm talking, Miss Jackie, do you remember if they came back with new quotes on any of this?
Mm-mm. The, the letter of credit came in last month, but we, they didn't come back with a new quote on it, no.
Man, what are your thoughts? You're on the commission, I mean, I, you, you, I hope you understand my concern.
No, I do, I really do. Um, the letter of credit, well, what the letter of credit was supposed to be in due until completion, which it was supposed to be in just about completed. It's one reason why I don't think uh, Rodney asked for any more than that, because we only went up a percentage. Now, um, it's also that they have um, so many days after the completion that they're still responsible for, just in case something happened.
Okay.
But, I mean, we can always take it back to the planning commi- planning commission to ask for uh,
I just, I mean.
Rodney has the calculations, and I can get those to you, but
And we got thirty days.
It's a, it's twenty percent or twenty-five percent
Tuesday twenty-five.
Of the total. Twenty-five percent of the total.
Tuesday twenty-five.
So it, I asked him over and over again, is it done? And he said, no, but it's almost done. So this is like, for the storm drain, it's not a lot of
No, there's not gonna be a lot there, but
Yeah.
It's twenty-five percent of the remaining.
Yeah, not the whole thing, just the remaining to be completed, yeah.
And then for the water and sewer maintenance, it was a, it was a percentage of the cost to actually do it.
Right.
So those are, that's the true cost, I think, um, and it's a percentage of what was spent, if that makes sense. They've already spent it, so it's already there.
The one that really caught my eye was roadway.
The roadways, okay. And that one you accepted last month.
We did, yes. I just Already voted on that one.
Just ask, please, while we're doing this.
Rescind it.
Yeah, what they're, yeah.
Okay.
Because, I mean, as I told Kate and I think Cory, we've been doing this in the banking industry for years, because we didn't want a property that wasn't completed. And I thankfully, for the planning commission, started doing this, I guess this is the first one we've done, isn't it, Miss Jackie?
Yeah.
So, thank the Lord, we're getting to a point where we don't have a project done like we got in Sugar Creek right now, with the roads and the shape they are, because of the fact we didn't have that. So.
So, we're, we still want to say defer.
We still wanted to defer, but if you would just give me a
What about moving forward on the storm water?
All right, first we needed to, uh, to have a motion and a vote.
On B.
On B, and then on C.
Well, they're gonna, B and C gonna be separate?
It's whichever you wanted, you can do it together, or you can do it separately.
All right. Mayor, I'll make a motion to defer B, resolution twenty twenty-two, days fifty, and C, resolution twenty twenty-two, days fifty-one, the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
And add have the planning commission to revisit.
Yes, please. Got a second on that? All those in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Letters of credit for Sugar Creek, and this is storm water only, correct?
We're asking you to defer the water and sewer into the January meeting, and only approve the storm water.
So is this gonna require two different motions?
Mm-hmm. I think so.
Yeah, because one we deferred and the other one
Other ones, we're about, all right. I will entertain a motion for storm water.
And that's to approve.
Approved.
I make a motion to approve the storm water.
What kind of motion, do we have a second?
A second, yeah.
Got a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Entertain a motion to defer water and sewer.
I make a motion that we uh, defer water and sewage, hopefully to next month when planning commission has an opportunity to revisit.
Absolutely. Got a motion, do we have a second?
Okay.
Got a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Bid award for Rainy Street Sewer Improvements.
Uh, we opened, uh, mayor and commissioners, we opened that bid today at two o'clock, and that bid came in at six hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, at least twice what we thought it would. And it's a, the bid is good for sixty to ninety days, so we're asking you to defer that till January to just give us some opportunity to take a look at that. I asked the engineer, Matthew Johnson was here today, if we could break that up and do it in pieces and save some money. I just don't know if there's, you know, this is not a project that's part of our consent order that the state is requiring us to complete. So we're not under a mandate to get it done, but my goodness, we have a sewer line on top of a creek that was washed out by a storm. It needs to be done. It's just not something that we're mandated to get it done. So we're really just asking for a little time to, we literally just opened the bids this afternoon, and we got one, so. We may rebid it, possibly too. We had a second bidder that wanted to bid, but could not get the bid to bore underneath the creek in time to meet our requirements today. So, we may come back to you with a different plan in January. We're just not comfortable with that price.
And I can tell you, they're not. I happened to walk in as soon as they opened it.
Nobody was smiling.
To kick my mouth in hell, and they said, you don't wanna come in here. Entertain a motion to defer.
I make a motion that we defer to bid award for Rainy Street Sewer at this time, due to the increase in price.
Have a motion, do we have a second? Got a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Bid award for banking programs.
We're flying up there a whole lot next month.
Yeah, no kidding.
Hell, yeah.
Amen.
We got an agenda for next month already, don't we?
Hopefully it's all easy stuff. We already moved forward on the bid, uh, the bank bid tabulation. I'll let um, uh, Loretta comment on that, but we did get bids from all the local banks. And uh, she's worked through it with Ashley. They actually had the banks do a demo on their online services so that we could see what their services were and what they offered. And um, I'll turn it over to you, and you can kinda make a recommendation after all the bids came in and the demos were done.
Oh, we had uh, two banks uh, come in and present demos, um, Ashley and I both, oh, attended those demos. Um, we are very lucky and very fortunate in this community to have, oh, some very good, good banks uh, located here. That is something that's very, um, not all small communities have, are blessed with that. So, that bid did, we did have uh, two very, for the checking accounts, we had two very close bids. Um, the bids were virtually identical. About the only difference was in the, uh, when we scored them was in the online banking. Um, one of the uh, the bank uh, is using a platform that uh, the Reliant Bank used, and we really like that platform a whole lot better than what, uh, once United Community bought it out, their online services, uh, the, the actual, um, the actual, oh, computer is not, uh, the website. It's harder to read, it's harder to navigate, and it also requires more, um, work on our part when we're transferring funds. We do, the way we work our funds is that the, uh, every day a deposit is made into a clearing account, and then the following day, that money is transferred out into the separate funds. Because we can't co-mingle funds. And um, the, honestly, Heritage Bank, oh, their online platform was much easier to follow, and uh, Ashley and I both agreed that that was, and that was about the only difference between the two bids. They were very close. We would had, we'd have wonderful service with either one of those banks, as far as our checking goes. Um, First Farmers wasn't really interested in our checking accounts. Um, but they were in our, uh, savings. And so they really come out very strong on, on the savings end. So our recommendation would be that we go, for our checking accounts, we go with Heritage Bank. Um, for our construction accounts, we'd go with the United Community Bank. And for our savings accounts, we'd go with the First Farmers Bank.
All right, any questions for Loretta? Here none, entertain a motion.
I make the motion to accept.
Banking services.
Y'all are looking at this, right, the recommendation, okay?
We have a motion to accept. We have a second.
Second, that's for you.
Got a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Approval of State of Tennessee Form CT O two five three, and this is in regards to the bonds.
Yes, anytime we take on any additional debt, we have to report to the comptroller's office that we've done so. It's all been approved and sold, and it's just the formality that we send this uh, paperwork through the state. Anything else, Loretta, on that?
No, it doesn't have to have, all, all we have to do is know within the minutes that it was presented to you tonight. So it doesn't, actually have to have a vote. You've already voted, um,
On the bonds.
On the bonds. So this is just a, um, a report to the state.
The state that says we've incurred the debt. All right, any questions? Entertain a motion for the approval.
I make a motion that we approve.
We got
CT O two five three.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We have no one that signed up for comments, so that takes care of that. Vice Mayor, anything you'd like to add at the end of the year?
I thank God for us, hands to another year. Hope that we help make some of the residents, most of the residents happy. Um, hope we all have a blessed and a safe holiday, especially my young folks. Be careful. And we, cause we will help feed the road. No, icy Christmas.
Yeah, icy.
Wine, icy. I'd rather have a scotch.
Yeah, I do. Mike?
Only thing I got, I had a call from a citizen, and it was, gee, and Kate did some North Locust Street, between there and thirty every minute. With people still speeding, deer, it's good, you know, when the kids are going, it's good.
Okay.
Think we could put a little sign up?
And I asked, I asked him, but he asked me about the sign, and I told him I, I would get back.
Thank you, Jack. Miss Willie, if you say anything, make a break, please. Thank you for being here. And got your back.
Thank you.
Man?
Please pray.
Yes.
Pray.
We sure are. Your first rodeo.
I know. Uh, I just wanna thank everybody that's supported me. I'm really blessed and honored to be part of this community. They never thought of me being at a table like this, ever, even a year ago. But I wanna specifically thank Jennifer for, not only the billboard, but just in her support and helping getting me involved. And there's a lot of people in this room that have been part of that, and my husband for hanging in there with all my door knocking.
Yeah, he's the one that really needs paid. Cause he doesn't know what he's gotten into yet.
I, I love the city, and uh, I just want you to know I'm gonna work hard to do my very best for the city of Mount Placid.
We're proud to have you and mine, Jennifer. I've said my piece, Merry Christmas to everybody and scouts. Thank y'all for taking the initiative. Got a motion, it's me, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're gone.